The Board of Supervisors of Yavapai County. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order and after the invocation and pledge allegiance by Pastor Gil Vernon. Gil?
Good morning, everyone. Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Valley Dethler, as we have the word of prayer. Our heavenly Father, how thankful we are that you are God of love and goodness and mercy and grace. How grateful we are, Father, for the freedom we have in our country to worship you and to pray to you openly in public assemblies like this. We thank you for the many blessings that you bring to each of our lives, day by day. We thank you, Lord, for your promise that wherever there are two or more gathered in your name, that you are here with us to guide us and to guard us. Our Father, we recognize by the evidence here of so many people being present that there's a lot of passion and feeling and opinion in this room. And so our prayer this morning, our Father, is that you would give each of our supervisors the wisdom and the courage to do the business of our county in a way that is good and right for all the people who live here, and that these leaders would be considerate and courteous to all who are here today to express their views. Lord, we pray that everyone here would act in a way that shows respect for one another and all that is done here today, that it will be done in a manner that honors you and that is pleasing in your sight. Lord, let each of our leaders be mindful that they are not here today just to have their will and their way done, but to do your will, to seek your justice, and in doing so, they would bring goodness and blessing to the people of Yavapai County. We praise you and thank you for all of these things, and we pray in Jesus' name and everybody's side. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you Pastor Vernon. Okay, a little housekeeping. If anybody needs hearing equipment or anything like that, or needs accommodation for any ADA issue, please see the clerk of the board and we'll see what we can do to help you out. Second thing is bathrooms. Bathrooms are down the hall, beyond, beyond the elevators, to the left. Big men's and women's bathrooms. Anybody need any accommodations? Everybody looks like they're in good shape. A lot of bathrooms out here today. You're welcome. Okay, moving on. Would the clerk, please follow the rule?
Yes, sir. Chairman Brown?
Here.
Vice Chair Garrison?
Present.
Supervisor Simmons?
Present.
Supervisor Thonan?
Here.
Supervisor Mallory?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Moving on, we're gonna move item one from the action items, which is the Second Amendment resolution, and bring it forward so that we can do that as soon as possible, that people don't have to stand around all morning and wait through all the different discussion and things like that. The way we're gonna do this is the clerk of the board is going to read that action item, and it's the resolution. We will then ask the board if there is a motion or not, send a second, and then go into board discussion. After the board discussion, we will move forward before the vote with one hour, one hour of comment, okay? It'll be first come, first served on the comments. However, we are gonna let folks over in Cottonwood, let them have the first 10 minutes or so, okay? Amount of time you'll have on the meter is two minutes maximum. If somebody before you already said what you're gonna say, don't come up. Let somebody else get a chance to say something different. So, see how that works. So, moving forward, clerk of the board, please read the resolution.
Yes, this is Yavapai County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020. The resolution of the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors supporting the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and Article Two, Section Twenty-Sixth of the Constitution of the State of Arizona, and declaring Yavapai County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Whereas the Board of Supervisors met in regular session this fifth Friday, fifth day of Friday, 2020, and whereas Arizona revised Statute 11251, 17 and 21, provide authorization for the Board of Supervisors to adopt provisions necessary to preserve the health of the county, and make and enforce necessary rules and regulations for the county of its body, the preservation of order, and the transaction of business. And whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution, adopted in 1791 as part of the Bill of Rights, protects the fundamental and individual right of the people to keep and bear arms. And whereas the Supreme Court of the United States in District of Columbia versus Heller, 554 U.S., 570 in 2008, affirmed an individual's right to possess firearms unconnected with service in the military for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And whereas the Supreme Court of the United States in McDonald versus Chicago, 561, U.S., 742 in 2010, affirmed that the right of an individual to keep and bear arms as protected under the Second Amendment is incorporated by the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, and therefore applicable against several states of the United States. And whereas the Supreme Court of the United States in United States versus Miller, 307, U.S., 174 in 1939, opining that firearms that are part of the ordinary military equipment or whose use could contribute to the common defense are protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas Article Two, Section Twenty-Sixth of the Constitution of the State of Arizona provides that the right of the individual citizen to bear arms in defense of himself or the state shall not be impaired, but nothing in this section shall be construed as authorizing individuals or corporations to organize, maintain, or employ an armed body of men. And whereas upon assuming office, the members of the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors took an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, and today hereby reaffirm their commitment to the United States Constitution and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, by the authority granted by the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona and the people of Yavapai County, Arizona, do hereby commit to stand and defend their rights and liberties as guaranteed by the United States Constitution and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona. Be it further resolved that the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors affirms its support to the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and declares Yavapai County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Be it therefore, no, be it further resolved, excuse me, that the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers, or officers for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the people's right to keep and bear arms.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I'd happily make a motion to approve. Second. Second by Mr. Simmons. Okay, at this point, we'll enter into discussion amongst the board. Just Mallory, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm thinking.
Mr. Garrison?
Nope, I'm good with it. I'm fine. I could make a stump speech for, I could, I could make a stump speech for about 30 minutes, I'm a second man.
You're, you're not running again.
No, I'll get my time to the, to the public.
Right, and I, I agree. Okay, so now what we'll do is we're gonna go into the hour I was talking about, you know, people being able to get up and say something that they wish. And we're gonna start out in Cottonwood, so Ms. Rosa Perry is over there, she's reading very, I can see her in her purple.
That's Brandy, you've got Brandy.
Randy up there, Brandy?
Red Brandy.
Can you hear us all right? We can't hear you is the problem.
Microphone's not on.
What did they need to do, Michael?
Closer to the mic. Still can't.
Brandy, can you make sure the microphone is enabled? There's a green light on. Thank you again. On behalf of the members of the Arizona Second Amendment Sanctuary Movement, Drake Mitchell, Merna Lieberman, John Mitchell, we would like to thank all of you for passing of this declaration to make Yavapai County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. In the context of the current broad and zealous attacks on our Second Amendment in counties nationwide, your action could not be more significant, for it gives the citizens of this county the first of two layers of protection in case actual gun confiscation, prosecution, or punishments are attempted in our state, even temporarily, under such laws. We know you put hard work into this effort, some of it during the holiday season, and we are grateful to you. In making the resolution official, you responded directly to the voice of the people. With America under such constant attack from the left, we know that there was an element of courage involved in fulfilling the will of the people regarding this resolution. We want to honor you for that courage and to thank you for standing with the Constitution against the hurricane-force winds of internal anti-Americanism, against which all patriot Americans are now standing with increasing determination. Thank you again, and we know you have made Yavapai County proud. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else there, Brandy? Okay, he's out of our picture, Brandy. Can you bring him back up further to his, to that?
Board Supervisors Chairman and assembled patriots. You all know me, my name is Dr. Gilchak, as I'll dispense with my long resume. There you go. Okay, is that a little better?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, today is a special anniversary, because it is the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz and the 75th anniversary of the liberation of the personal, American personal war camp at Dulson. And I'm a triple jeopardy person. Not only am I a veteran, and I am a disabled veteran in real chair of that, but I'm a Jew, and I can't leave from the fight. I don't have a choice. So, I applaud you for finally getting it together and standing up, and again, I want to especially thank Ms. Mallory for speaking with me and communicating with me via social media as well as in person. And I will take the rest of my time to the folks here that want to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Brown, members of the board. I'm Kelly Moffett, I'm a 34-year resident here of Yavapai County, and I came here this morning merely to express my appreciation for the board taking in this matter of the county's declaration of itself as a sanctuary county for protection of the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. I applaud you for that, and I appreciate the fact that the language was strengthened from the last time that this was considered a few weeks ago in Prescott, and I just want to offer my support. I realize that there's a lot of people out there, they're claiming that this is unnecessary because it's redundant, that the Bill of Rights already exists and the federal laws already supersede those of the state and the local governments, but unfortunately, as evidenced last night, watching the, the speech by our president, there are a number of people who clearly do not stand for the Second Amendment, they were sitting on their hands when he gave appreciation for it and expressed his support for the Second Amendment. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you to our county, the supervisors and the board for making this move today, and I do pray that you would all vote in the affirmative for this resolution. Thanks very much.
Chairman Brown, I have two other requests to speak, forms, neither of them want to speak. James Collins and Chris Ransom, did you want me to read their comments?
Please do. Please read those.
Chris Collins, Chris Collins is in favor of this, and he says our rights as Americans are being challenged daily. Without the Second Amendment, we will suffer a great loss of rights. Let's make Yavapai County a Second Amendment Sanctuary. And Chris Ransom says, "I took citizenship in 1999, and it was, it was a very proud moment for me. Please protect the Constitution of this great country and this great state." And that's all we have over here.
Okay, is that everybody over in Cottonwood?
Sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next person up is gonna be Penny Pugh, representative for Congressman Gosar. She's gonna make it short, she promised.
Yes. Thank you Chairman Brown, members of the board.
No letter this time.
Turn that microphone on, it's red. There you go.
It's red. Yes, thank you for bringing this resolution to establish Yavapai County as the Second Amendment Sanctuary County. This is from Congressman Gosar. I wish I could be there in person, however, in Washington DC this week as Congress is in session. The Second Amendment is a fundamental right guaranteed by the Constitution and your local initiative to protect this right in face of attempted government overreach is an example of the Constitution working as it found was intended. Right to own a gun is the right to defense of self, property, and liberty. It is what ensures that someone can defend themselves from attacker or from a government trying to abolish personal liberties. In recent years, our country has gone through the unfortunate emergency of mass shootings, and the Democrats wrongly blame this issue on legal guns. This tragic trend is not due to the presence of guns, but a breakdown in our societal norms and values. In fact, the presence of legal guns in mass shooting situations would prevent an attacker from causing harm. In wake of this societal crisis, the left has wrongly placed the blame on legal gun owners and are working to undermine our rights. In fact, a recent Democrat contending for the presidential nomination proudly stated in a national debate that, hell yes, he would take your gun. Even more recently, Democratic takeover of the executive and legislative branches of the Virginia State Government has led to a proposed measure where the government could seize a gun simply because they deem the owner a threat. They label gun owners as dangerous and a problem in society. How did gun owners respond? A peaceful protest in Richmond where attendees used their First Amendment right to protect their Second Amendment rights, ironically at a time when the government is trying to violate the Constitution. This peaceful rally was important, but gun owners must be vigilant and take measures to protect their rights. That is why I was proud to stand with La Paz, Apache, and Mohawk County, as well as Bullhead City, as they join the growing Second Amendment movement. Democrat cities across the county are even the same as where a city from to have to violate immigration laws. However, others are using this to keep the government from violating constitutional law. This resolution being considered by your county follows this light, and I am honored to be here and support this initiative. It is a privilege to serve as your representative in Congress, I've always and will always fight to defend the Constitution and uphold the fundamental rights guaranteed to us in the Constitution. While I continue to push this at the federal level, our system of government provides us with incredible ability to also defend our rights at the state and local level. Your civic passion and engagement is praiseworthy as you continue to use our democratic guarantees to uphold our rights. Together, we will stop the left's overreach and bad policies. We will continue to uphold our rights, and we will do so within the laws of the nation. As the Democrats attempt to violate the law and take away our rights, thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for my seat.
Thank you. You're good.
No, not for her. I intend to defer for an elected official of this federal legislature.
Chris Cook, can you? Chris wanted to bring his musket, but I told him he couldn't.
You know, I, I just, I found a musket. It was 1853 Harper's Ferry arsenal musket. It was in my grandma's basement, she said we had to go down there, so, kind of put that in. And you know, really, that's where most of our guns are. They're sitting there in our house, protected, waiting for a time to be dusted off and be used again. And I look at what's happened in Virginia, and by the way, to all our patriots in, in the Verde Valley, thanks for standing with us and, and all the patriots here today, and it does my heart to, to feel good, to see everybody take time off work, take time out of their lives to support this.
Do we have to announce people?
Oh, I'm Chris Hookneom. And I just see what's happened in Virginia, where we had these demonstrations, everybody showed up. It was peaceful, it was, it was clean, there wasn't a rest made, and then the government decided to go ahead and do whatever they wanted to anyway. And I think they're, they're on notice now. I really think something different is gonna happen here today, I think something different is going around the state, and a resolution has no teeth. You can always say, "The state said this, now we have to do this," but what it does do, it sends a message to our governor and the other people that we won't tolerate it, and we will fight against it, so, thank you very much.
Good morning Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Garrison, and members of the board. My name is Sherri Hannah. I stand before you today as a voice for several women who could not be here due to work commitments and being out of town. Today, you will hear many perspectives, and I support everyone's right to speak, but we have to ask ourselves, what led us here? We are here because the governor and lawmakers of Virginia held up their right hand, swearing to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and then turned around and approved seven new gun control bills infringing on the rights of law-abiding Virginia gun owners. We see this type of total disregard for our Second Amendment rights under our Constitution under attack. This is about our rights, protecting our freedoms and liberties, and the right to self-protect, especially for women. And why women? Because the highest number of assaults in our country are committed against women. Women have also the largest increase of gun ownership in our country, empowering them to self-protect. On the grounds of the Arizona State Capitol, there is a plaque from the Governor's Commission on Violence Against Women dated October 1st, 1999. It states, and I quote, "A place to rest and remember those whose lives have been altered by domestic violence. For so long as there is memory, they will live in our hearts," end quote. Unfortunately, as long as there are individuals who choose to do harm to our fellow men, women, and children, those who choose to self-protect under our Constitution and to protect their families are guaranteed the right to do so. Your Resolution 2020 is symbolic, reinforcing those rights and liberties, and I thank you for doing so.
Thank you Sherri. Who wants to volunteer back by the door to call out names, because I'm gonna be calling names of people who may be outside? Michael Wilk? Yes, thank you Michael. Randy Hayes.
Randy?
Randy's up here. Never fails. Okay, the next one after Randy will be Ralph Hess. Is this your Hess? And the third one after that will be Nancy Martin. Nancy? Nancy Martin. Randy, go ahead, you have to give your name first.
Okay, Randy Hayes. I'm resident of Prescott Valley, Mary Mallory. I had the delight in talking to a lot of the people here in the back of the room, if you can still hear me, in the back of the room, and also over here on the right, who are for this law, or for this resolution, but I'm not for this sanctuary county type of situation. I'm an Arizona native, been here just about all of my life, I'm a veteran, as you can see in the hat I'm wearing, I'm a gun owner, full support of the Second Amendment, full support of it. I was a past NRA member, but not now, because it used to be back then when I was a kid, I had the vest on with all the patches and everything, I had my .30 out of six and my 12 gauge, and all the necessary weaponry you could have when you were a child. But I've changed on that venue because the NRA changed. It's not the NRA that I used to know as a family group and one for gun safety. I'm telling, tell the truth, I've been kind of exhausted with all this talking about Second Amendment rights, and I know it's already guaranteed in the Constitution. I feel the proposal is just an act of desperation, designed to instill fear that somehow the government's gonna take your gun away. How in the world is the government gonna take your gun? Are you gonna come to every one of our doorsteps and ask for them, and we're gonna get them?
They are.
I'm cool. They're not. How about 300 million guns? What I really wanted to address here, though, is the liability issue.
Randy, your time's up. I didn't remind, I didn't remind everybody, inside, outside of this room, disruption of somebody's feet is unacceptable, rude, disappointing, rude. Keep it civil.
Wait, wait, I haven't started yet.
Go ahead Ralph.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, I'm Ralph Hess. Let me jump right into it. The express language of the proposed resolution you are considering, quote, "The Yavapai County Board of Supervisors will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, etc., for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe upon the people's right to keep and bear arms." It's merely a specific expression of your oath of office to, to quote, "Support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona." Therefore, several questions come to mind, which I ask the board can answer. Why are you considering this proposed resolution? Isn't it unnecessary? What exactly do you mean by declaring Yavapai County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County? What will this look like? Will the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors do differently, do something differently after enacting this proposed resolution that is not being done prior to the passage of this resolution? If Congress or the United, or the Arizona State Legislature enacts a law regulating weapons, for example, the red flag law, does the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors plan to determine, plan to determine its constitutionality, or rely upon the county attorney or the county sheriff to make that determination? As you know, under our system of governance, constitutionality of laws is determined by courts, not by boards of supervisors, not by county attorneys, not by county sheriffs, and not by Second Amendment Sanctuary County advocates. Until a court determines a law to be unconstitutional, your oath bind you to authorize and appropriate the use of county resources for the purposes of enforcing that law. So, I've seen my time's up. The one comment I want to make is, I'm an advocate for, for participatory democracy, so I'm really pleased to see all these people here.
Thank you. Nancy Martin. Nancy?
Hello, thank you for having me here. I come before you as a concerned citizen, as the mom of a preschool teacher and a grandmother of three children that go to school here in Prescott. I believe that this resolution to make Yavapai County a gun sanctuary is unnecessary and dangerous. Common sense gun control laws do not confer adequate Second Amendment rights, and we can't help prevent B+ deaths. These include limiting the number of bullets in a magazine, increasing the purchase age to 21, same as age for buying alcohol, universal background checks, including those at gun shows, and closing the loopholes, having a waiting period to get a gun, having safety locks to prevent accidental discharge, banning gun stops, and cautiously approaching red flag laws. I fully support a person's right to bear firearms, and this is especially important for those living in rural areas such as Prescott County. I believe that responsible armed citizens contribute to our safety. Responsible, being the key word. Common sense gun regulation could prevent gun violence without infringing on Second Amendment rights. Protection common sense gun control laws, rather than shunning them, might prevent a tragedy at Prescott High School, like we've seen at Parkland. No mistake, a mass shooting could occur here in Prescott, everybody's on town. Therefore, I do not support this resolution, and I urge you to impose it. Thank you.
Thank you Nancy. Anna Marie Ward. Anna Marie Ward.
Good mornings, Chairman Brown, members of the board. I wanted to take a moment and commend the board for this initiative. As the voice of the, the people, the overwhelming majority here are in favor of this, and I commend you for passing it. Briefly, my family fought in the Revolutionary War, and I'm proud to be a native of this county and this state where we not only promote, but are proud to be advocates of the Second Amendment. As a woman, I feel the comfort of the weight of this sig on my hip when I travel. I know it keeps me safe from what could go wrong. While we've argued and seen in this room that this initiative may not have enough weight or teeth, what this is, is the voice of the people saying, "It's the beginning." It's the beginning of not only opposing red flag laws, but it's time to start moving forward as a unified people to repeal many of the infringements that have been put on our gun rights. I urge you to continue to be the voice of the people in this county as you work with our state and federal lawmakers and let them know who we are and what we believe. Thank you.
James Taylor. Following Mr. Taylor will be John Mitchell. John Mitchell. He's right behind you Mike.
My name is James Taylor. I'm a resident of Alden, here in Yalapai County. First and foremost, I wish to encourage you to vote as you've indicated as to this particular uh, resolution. I would like to remind everybody, not just the people on the board, but everybody in the audience. Everybody on the board, and a significant percentage of the people in the audience took and have professed the oath of office at least once, if not multiple times, to defend and uphold the Constitution of the United States. The Tenth Amendment says that the ultimate power rests with the people and the local. The Second Amendment is one of ten that are absolute guarantees. The first being the ability to say what you will without fear of repercussion. The trick comes in this. This is centered around not just the 2A issue, but it's centered around the First Amendment issue because you, anybody, can be denounced under a red flag because you, for whatever reason, frightened somebody who is irrational or determined that because you own a legal means of defense, that you are somehow not right. This is what this entire thing is about. Thank you again. I do encourage you to follow what you've committed yourselves to. This is more than just a resolution, and sanctuary is not a bad word in this respect. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, then Mike Ammons, I believe it's M, A-M-M-O-Ns, okay.
Good morning. Uh, thank you all for considering this. I wanted to just briefly-
You gotta give your name, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. John, John Mitchell from Cottonwood, I apologize. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to again thank you all publicly and for the record for your graciousness to us all who are assembled here. I'm proud to see these numbers, by the way, again. Uh, both collectively on December 8th in Cottonwood and uh, this last January 2nd. We appealed for your careful consideration of the Yalapai uh, Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. We were all aware and do appreciate the various time constraints and business that you were all regularly or oftentimes thanklessly. I know I've been in your seat before. Um, and so you all handled it wonderfully and with much grace, and I appreciate that greatly. I just want to say it again. But um, the only thing I had briefly, maybe I won't get to them, was in regards to Urpo. Since Arizona Governor Ducey is a major proponent of these red flag laws under the school safety plan, what protection will this proclamation afford to law-abiding Yalapai County residents that could possibly be targeted by deceitful frivolous or unwarranted charges, incarcerations, and probable or possible confiscations according to what the governor's plan includes? Isn't Mr. Ducey's Plan One whereby a person charged may not be able to face their accused unless proved they're innocent rather than being proven guilty? I know I'm out of time, but thank you all, and that was a rhetorical question, so I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Uh, first, I want to thank John. Um, John lives two doors down from me. Um, we're neighbors and uh, wouldn't know you coming over, I wouldn't give you a ride this morning. Um, I want to thank you personally. You, you've been having this discussion with me for going on three years, and it's been quite a journey to get to where we are today. Unfortunately, where we are today because of what we believe are infringements on our rights. So, um, I just wanted to thank you for continuing to put that pressure on, continuing to be a voice for reasoning, continuing to speak to us on this, even when it didn't look like we could get any more admitted, so I want to thank you so much.
Looks like you belong to the NRA. Mike Ammons. I have three signatories on my jacket. Sheriff Babu, Sheriff Opale, and Sheriff Scott Nasher. They signed my jacket without hesitation. I wear this jacket with pride for what it stands for and everything about it. I joined the Navy in 1960 and was assigned to VF-121 in NDS Miramar in California. After my four years, I went to United Airlines and served there for 33 years. I have worked under regulations and procedures that have teeth in them to keep our planes flying above this gray land. My request is that the document before you today have enough teeth in it to keep the flag of freedom flying above Yalapai County. Thank you. Jillian Morris. Jillian's coming in from the back of my ear will be Mark E. Smith. Mark Smith. Jillian?
Yes. Angela DeMorse. Um, I'm here because I am embarrassed and because the amendments what the Constitution's laws and the entire country together. So, as a child, we grew up in a small town. My parents owned a grocery store. We were taught to work in that store. Now, my dad had a gun underneath to protect us all if we were in there doing something. So, he's been, it's hard for me to say. Within that small town, somebody could've drove by there and broke into that store and in that store rob that store. And if my dad wouldn't have had a gun to protect his family or the people wanting things from that store, we all would've been gone. There wouldn't have been anything because it would've taken minutes for the cops to be able to get there because it takes at least nine and a half minutes just intel for the cops to be able to show up to do something. And without automatic defense, we're gone. So with that, I would just like to say something that somebody helped me put together. But I'll apologize. It is a sad day in the United States when the citizens need to create a sanctuary city for an inalienable right as basic as the Second Amendment. Our founding fathers understood the difference between natural rights and rights created by legislation and created the Second Amendment to acknowledge this natural right to do self, to self-defense from those that would deprive a person of their wife, liberty, and property regardless whether it is-
That's all right, go ahead Jillian.
Um, whether it is a person or a tyrannical government. Thomas Jefferson said, "The strongest reason for the people to retain the right to keep and bear arms is to protect themselves against tyranny and government." Alexander Hamilton wrote in the Federalist Papers, "For it is a truth which experience of ages has attested that the people are always most in danger when the means of injuring their rights are in the possession of those whom they became least suspicious." Finally, George Washington said, "If three people are not only being armed, but disciplined." This speaks volumes as Hamilton and Jefferson are dramatically politically opposed and still agree on this. I urge you to please vote yes to protect the Second Amendment as this amendment protects all the others.
Thank you. Mark Smith. And then will be Josephine Dunn. Josephine Dunn.
So my name's Mark Smith. I live in Chino Valley. I'm here today to speak about the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. Its reliance on what it calls constitutional laws and Supreme Court of the United States. All the documents referenced in this statement are submitted as evidence to appear as part of the public record of this meeting. The resolution before the board currently has the following action statement, and I quote, "For the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the people's right to keep and bear arms." As we all know, a resolution carries no legal weight, and an ordinance is necessary to provide any protection whatsoever to the citizens of Yalapai County. However, the current action statement is also problematic, and here's why. And I'd ask you to reference the documents before you by Pobio Sodda, a retired attorney specializing in the Constitution and the Federalist Papers. Her website is listed on the first document, and I'm referring to why Supreme Court opinions are not part of the law of the land. I provided you all a copy of this document, one on nullification, and a copy of the Constitution Declaration of Independence in a book form. Simply stated, and I quote from Ms. Sodda, quote, "Article 6, Clause 2 of the U.S. Constitution, the supremacy clause defines the supreme law of the land as the Constitution. In the acts of Congress and treaties which are authorized by the Constitution, Supreme Court opinions are not included." Furthermore, Article 1, Section 1 of the U.S. Constitution vests all lawmaking powers granted by the Constitution in Congress. Our Constitution doesn't grant any lawmaking powers to the judicial branch. The key lies in misapplying common law precedent to organic statutory law. This sleight of hand by the Supreme Court is the basis for the destruction of our Constitution. If you read and understand the documents I submitted, and I know they're somewhat long, you will understand crystal clear what this means. You also then understand why the reliance on the phrase "unconstitutionally infringe" is even more meaningless than you could imagine. I'm not suggesting that this resolution not be passed. I am saying this is not the end of the issue, but the beginning. It has taken 150 years of horrible courtrooms to get us to where we are today. You here in Yalapai County has a chance to start turning things around. This is a historic opportunity, but thank you for taking it. Let's start back on the road to freedom, take the right fork.
Thank you Mike. After Josephine will be Lynn Steribo. Urbo.
Hi everyone, I'm Josephine Dunn. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I just want to say I am incredibly grateful for your courage and your bravery and deciding as to this providing me the ability to continue to say. Thank you for listening to all of the people here last month and across the hill there, speaking what we have to say and how we need your community and what we need. I just want to say thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Different items sir, different items. Give us a speed letter, I'm sorry.
Anthony Macaronio. Macaronio?
Thank you.
And that'll be Regina Pecoraro.
I'll make you quick.
You're up, you already lost a minute.
I'm sorry. I'm not gonna do a big speech here. I would want to thank you all for passing this resolution. I know it doesn't have any teeth to it, but just the fact that you listened to the people and asked it. I'm from New Jersey, and I stood behind in front of that legislature, and they played with their phones, they slept, and they had no clue what the Second Amendment is. We had a retired Jersey police officer who didn't know, know what CCW meant. That's New Jersey. I'm glad we have people here. I'm glad of the turnout that we have here. I lived in a state of nine million people, supposedly one million registered gun owners, and we would get 100 people to show up for their gun rights. And we have more than that just for this county. I just want to thank everybody for supporting our Second Amendment. That's it, thank you.
I see you at least once a week. Have you told your husband yet?
Just looking to start talking, Sherri. Good morning.
She's there very often, she's very often at the council meetings in Chino Valley, which I also attend, so.
Thank you very much for that too. Good morning Chairman Brown, Vice Chair, uh, Garrison and Supervisors. My name is Regina Pecoraro. I live in Chino Valley. I am a 100% disabled combat veteran of the First Gulf War. This is due to a sexual assault and being exposed to nerve agent. Due to the medication I take to control my debilitating pain daily, I would be considered someone that would immediately fall under the red flag laws. I am married to a Navy combat veteran and a mother of an active-duty Marine who married an Air Force veteran. I was the VFW service officer for all of Northern Arizona, and the fear of veterans seeking assistance for PTSD issues and losing their 2A rights was overwhelming. I'm also the Director of Compass Training Center and the leader of our well-armed women that are about 86 strong at our range. I want to let you know that we are thankful for your vote on the resolution to protect our 2A amendment rights, as other counties and cities have adopted the same. And I hope that you will work on an ordinance to protect the people of your county. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I'm looking for Ellie Paganian. And I'm calling Bushard then, so P-A-G-U-N-E-A-N.
Right here.
There you are. Is it Eli?
Yes sir, Eli Paggenson.
Thank you. The next one up will be John Stanton.
All right, for those of you who hear my very loud voice, my name is Eli Paggenson. I'm from Phoenix. I gotta thank my friend Jeff for driving me up here real quick, by the way. I owe you breakfast. Uh, by the way, I'm in full support of the Second Amendment Sanctuary here in Yalapai, and especially any laws that go against the idea of red flag laws. I don't think anyone who here who is in support of red flag laws has actually ever been red flagged. I have. And with that, I don't think those of you who support this have ever been in a situation or had to explain yourself to government officials, or even officials of a school district. Spoiler alert, to kangaroo court, one that goes against the founding principles of the assumption of innocence before proven guilt. On top of this, you've never watched them take the video games you've played, the stories you wrote to cope with past emotional and physical abuse to make you out as a future threat. I don't think any of you had the haunting, had the haunting experience of watching two law enforcement officers search your room and try to use your arc, your writing, your work, and your identity against you in a way that makes you look like a complete psychopath. The actual truth being you used those words to cope with the fact that your daddy's stripped you naked and beat you. Is that fair? Is that the system you want to encourage? One where an individual becomes afraid to seek help and fear of government reprisals? I know about the social ruination, the embarrassment, and most of all the harassment that comes along with unproved accusations like this from red flag laws. I know about all of these because they are the cause we move out of Palm Desert, California, and move out to Phoenix. You'll never know the feeling of shame and hopelessness accusations via red flag laws cause. To, to close, I hope you make the right call and defy these laws while- To close, I hope you make the right call and defy these laws while also becoming a Second Amendment Sanctuary.
John Stankwitz. Hi, John. Can you tell you about us?
John Stankwitz, Chino Valley, Arizona, AKA The Husband. You know enough about me. We just hosted an international shooting competition at our ranch in Chino Valley. I had competitors and guests from California to New Jersey, every place in between. We had international competitors, Sweden, Finland, Germany. The message today is not from me, the message is from them, because they do their research when they come to a town. And they know what's going on here today. And they want you to know that the world in fact is watching. Not just Yala Pike County, not just the state of Arizona, not just the United States. They urge you to unanimously pass this resolution. And if there are any issues with passing that resolution, or any doubts in what is written, particularly by international competitors, urge you and urge the public to reacquaint themselves with world history. The quote was, "If you believe that your state or federal government will not come knocking at your door to take away your rights, any rights, you're sorely mistaken." We urge you to unanimously pass this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Hopp Wind and Basil Fernamos. Come on up, Hopp. Let Hopp go first.
Good morning, service. I've been here before, and I'm still not your doctor's relative.
Is my doctor, question? But you are somebody else's relative.
Yes, my name is Hopp Wind, and I am running for Senate for LD 22. I'm also a Christian minister. Why am I here? Supporting Second Amendment. I lived and I escaped communism. If you think that the government cannot take away your guns and someone may kill you, you are mistaken. But right now, we have an entire political party that is subscribing to communism. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, if you have not accomplished anything, this is what you need to accomplish for your legacy. You need to approve this Second Amendment resolution. This is just one fence post, and the entire fence are protecting our rights. But Second Amendment, to close, is not about guns. It's about the sanctity of life. And I would ask you to protect the sanctity of life of the people of Yala Pike County. Thank you very much.
Whitey's shirt.
Thank you, good morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'm from Miraco County, from Annapolis, and.
We won't hold it again.
For the record, your name.
My first name is Basil, last name is Fernamos. And I would just implore you guys to vote in favor of this Sanctuary County. By voting in favor, I think it will help to deflect red flag laws. Voting in favor, if you're not voting in favor of gun rights, let's vote in favor of our right to due process. And our rights to the Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment, Sixth Amendment. Let's base the Second Amendment based all the amendments possible. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you very much.
You're up, Brian.
All right, you already started the clock, come on now. I'm Brian Silvernail, I am a.
You're a long-winded Brian.
I am long-winded. I am a 19-year-plus employee of the Sheriff's Office here in the county, a 39-year resident of Yala Pike County, a candidate for this board. I stand before you today and ask you to support and adopt this resolution. If for nothing more, to send a loud and clear message to our state legislators and our governor that further infringements on our Second Amendment will not be tolerated. While I ask you to adopt this resolution, I still maintain my position that this resolution has the potential of oversetting your authority as the board. I believe that it also potentially could be rendered ineffective if red flag laws are passed in the law. Our state courts and our legislators have already passed infringement laws in the law that if you ask me, they are unconstitutional. So really, the only thing that renders this resolution have any teeth is to communicate a message to these legislators, and I'm asking you to do that. For the people in this room, make no mistake, that this resolution does not solve red flag laws in our state. We must get in our representatives' ears. We must talk to our governor. We must keep these laws from being established. Board, to quote our President in his State of the Union last night, I'm going to read it here. There you go, okay. "The only victories that matter are victories that deliver for the people." So I ask you, and these aren't rhetorical questions, as members of the board, will you make this victory that delivers for the people? And not just some pincet with red herring? Will you stand with us in this fight and join with our President's acknowledgement and keep these red flag laws out of our out of our law books? Will you use your positions and your influence to join with us in this battle with our legislators? Thank you for your time.
Brian Sol. Brian Sol, Michael. And after that is John, I think it's Shuckett. Shuckett.
Your looks are innovative, great.
You got to get a board right on, you know, like.
Good morning Chairman Brown and Board Supervisors. I'm going to make this short and sweet. My great-grandfather, who was born here in Prescott, Arizona in 1932, and one thing he always told me was keep your firearms close, because you never know who's going to make you. So I'm going to say it like this. We're not Virginia, and we are not California. We are the people of Arizona, and we want our sanctuary rights to keep us, to protect them, to protect our families and our loved ones. Thank you.
For the record, your name. Brian Sol. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr.
You need to rewrite this, you really do.
Well, nerve damage, why should I tell you? Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, the Board. My name is Joel Shuckett, I am a lawyer of over 35 years, which will come in later. I want to thank you for the drafting of the resolution. I want to say initially, I agree with those such as Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Taylor, who have pointed out that this that red flag laws would be an infringement of more than the Second Amendment. It also involves the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Fifth and Fourteenth. I also want to say, this is a bit of coincidence. Today, The Courier published a letter to the editor by me, and yesterday, I submitted one responding to an earlier letter by Randy Hayes. In that letter, Mr. Hayes says that the Second Amendment has nothing to do with individual rights. He is so wrong, and Cindy, I hope you'll get that letter published. As a lawyer, I set out how that is so false when the Constitution wanted to speak about states they do have. Finally, to those who say that this resolution is not necessary, I want to quote John McAdrey. "You cannot be serious. Just look at what's happened in Virginia, and our own governor is supporting a red flag law. We do have to mobilize and stop that movement, otherwise, we can kiss our rights goodbye." Thank you.
Okay, we have six left, and I'm going to call these last six, because we're at over an hour right now, okay? So I'm going to call the last six, Ed Wolf. Come on in. Ed's from New York, so they have to forgive.
I drink coffee made with water. Good morning, Board Members. My name is Ed Wolf, I'm from Prescott. I'm in favor of making Yala Pike County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. As you already know, the leftists have been after the Second Amendment for years now. The very first thing a tyrannical government always does is disarm the citizens and take over the news media. And as you know, criminals prefer unarmed citizens. So let's make all of Arizona a sanctuary state by doing your part in Yala Pike County. Please listen to the people and make it happen. Thank you.
Daniel McCarthy. Andrew D. Ken Fritz. Ken Fritz.
Thank you very much, and.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again, and thank you for your hospitality, for your cordialness to everybody. The decorum has been fantastic. And I just want to say to everyone that the Second Amendment and all the amendments of the Constitution, these are our God-given rights. They have nothing to do with you or anyone else to grant them to us. These are rights that we are given by our Creator. This act that you're participating in is a great token, but I encourage you to continue down the road of inordinance. Do not stop here. Let's call this threat what it really is. This is a communist Marxist attempt to take our firearms and disarm our citizens, period, end of story. It is so blatant what is going on. It is so simple to reverse engineer and look at what's happening. So don't look at what you're doing as just an act of redundancy. This is the start. Continue. Everybody in this room, do not stop. That RV out there will be going around this state.
Take it up to sponsor.
Again, my name is Daniel McCarthy, I hope to serve you as your next United States Senator. You sent me to Washington DC, and we're going to fight this fight all the way there, every step of the way.
Ken Fritz. Hi, Ken.
Morning.
Morning.
Ken Fritz is my name, and I live in Prescott Valley. I thank you for the opportunity to be here and for taking the next step to help to secure our Second Amendment rights. When you hear the term "common sense gun laws," remember that common sense is a contradiction in terms. When Presidents, Senators, and Governors violate their oath of office and advocate chipping away at our Bill of Rights little by little, allegedly in the name of public safety, local government is our last line of defense. I'm here today to ask you to support and uphold our Second Amendment in the strongest possible terms. Guns in the hands of law-abiding citizens save lives, and red flag laws are preemptive punishment and tyranny. Thank you.
Thomas Mann. Thomas Mann. Phil Whitehead will be next. Phil Whitehead. After him, Joe Hoff. That'll be it.
Thank you Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Garrison. My background is that of a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel. Longtime concealed carrier combat bomber for 25 years. And a member of my church's security team. Everybody has said what I was going to say in the speech, so I'm throwing the speech out. All I can say is I've been behind the Iron Curtain, lived behind the Iron Curtain, had a son born behind the Iron Curtain. I don't want to see what happened there happen here. Support this Second Amendment resolution, and I encourage you to make it into a law of some type. Keep our county free. We don't like criminals here, we don't want them here. And the only way to do that is to support every individual's right, especially with to kill, carry, and weapon to defend themselves. I fully support all that. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you for your service with the First Air Count. Phil Whitehead.
My name is Phil Whitehead. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Board, and all the people that are here today. I just want to make a couple of quick points, because a lot of the things that I was going to say were already covered, so I'll skip those and I'll get right to the meat of what I believe in. Every county supervisor swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. Every law enforcement officer in this room, and every veteran in this room did the same thing. The key words in that are against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. And if anybody thinks that there aren't domestic enemies of the Second Amendment, they are kidding themselves. The other point is, there's an old phrase from long ago that says, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." And I do not believe that there's very many people in this room that don't know what has happened historically over the last hundred years. If you have a problem remembering that, I can point you to several history books at the public library. But as a former law enforcement officer, soldier, and now a 31-year member, resident of this county, I just want to thank the County Board for the efforts that they put into this and support the idea of following this up with an ordinance that is very strictly and strongly worded. I thank you very much.
Joe, when you were up here earlier, you should have told me you were the last one.
I'm going to be the last one.
Okay.
Good morning. The Sanctuary County ordinance is so important because red flag legislation mimics a FISA court because it is ex parte. That's ex parte, which means, as a young man who moved here from California, that unilaterally, a person with or without his counsel can go to a judge and try to convince him that you need either you're a threat to safety because maybe you're not mentally stable, you have mental issues, or maybe you just made them upset because you have a bumper sticker on your car that they're opposed to. And if you talk long enough, you will convince that judge because there's nobody else arguing the other side for you. They're not even in the room. And you, as the accused, do not even know this is going on. But if this happens and it is determined that you're a threat, two things are going to happen. There's going to be a search warrant issued, and they will search your premises. And if you have weapons, they will take them, they will find them. And then, the other thing is, the arresting officer, he'll be sure to have his cuffs because you will be asked to turn around and put your hands behind your back. You are going to be carried off, and then you will be evaluated. And even then, if you are free and determined not to be a threat, you have up to one year at your cost to convince a court that you are entitled to get your weapons back. That is guilty until proven innocent, it is unconstitutional, and it is wrong. Thank you.
Where'd Michael go? Michael, I think we're having a problem with this microphone up here, I think it's running out of juice. Just leave it off for right now, because we're going to take a break anyway in a second. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask the clerk. We have a motion and a second. Motion being made by Supervisor Sherman, second by Supervisor Simmons. All of those in favor of the resolution, if I indicate so, if I roll call. All of those in favor of the resolution, if I indicate so, to fire a roll call. Clerk, report.
Okay. Supervisor Mallory?
Yes.
Supervisor Thurman?
Yes.
Supervisor Simmons?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garrison?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Absolutely.